Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission. Before we get started, I'd like to send out a congratulations to the state soccer champions. I think we had members of Minnehaha County on all four state soccer championships. I think we're all just celebrating that we have state soccer championships and but I'd like to send out a special congratulations to the Brandon Valley Girls Team, the West Central Girls Team, the O'Gorman Boys Team, and the Sioux Falls Christian Boys Team. So, great season, congratulations to all of you. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder that meeting documents are available for review. Silence your cell phones, and Carol is here if you need a listening device. And then we get to start the meeting with some more good news, celebrating one of our very own.
Good morning. I'm Crystal Johnson, the state's attorney here for Minnehaha County. As we know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and typically in the month of October, there is an event that we have put on by the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council called Take Back the Night. This year, they're doing it a little different because of COVID, and so what they've done is more of an online type of event where they've had victims of domestic violence, a prosecutor, law enforcement, give speeches or presentations, and then they've posted them on Facebook as opposed to having the one night. But every year, the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council recognizes an advocate in action. And so this award was created in 2014 to recognize an outstanding individual from Minnehaha or Lincoln County whose efforts and work has made a difference in the lives of those impacted by domestic violence. This is the first time the award has ever been awarded to somebody in the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office. Lori Aylers is one of our deputy state's attorneys. She's been in our office for eight years. She had practiced up in Brown County prior to that, and then I think was in Sioux City doing some defense work for a little bit, but we won't really count those. But her entire career, Lori, has been dedicated to the field of domestic violence. Her role is to focus on intervention and prevention. She works tirelessly on this field. She persists when the rest of us have given up. Domestic violence is an exhausting aspect of our job. We see victims over and over and over again, and it's a cycle of violence, and we recognize it's a cycle of violence. And Lori is the driver in our office that keeps it going. She understands that at some point, that victim is going to cooperate. At some point, that victim will want to go forward with charges, will want to go forward with prosecution, and will want to hold the offender accountable. And Lori is by far our one that paves the way for that. Like I said, she goes forward, and the rest of us have given up, and the rest of us have just not persisted where she does. Her work requires her to balance avoiding the revictimization of a victim that doesn't want to go forward with understanding how the cycle of violence works and being patient when a victim doesn't want to cooperate any longer. This person takes it all in stride, and she never gives up. She truly pours her heart into the work. We will talk about cases, and there are many times I say to her, "I would have given up a long time ago. You have persisted." She has trials where she's able to hold offenders accountable, where we have lost victims, where victims no longer want to cooperate. She takes the evidence she has, and she puts it forward. She's one of a kind, and we are truly blessed to have her here, especially in the year where we're having such an increase in domestic violence arrests and such an increase in violent crime. And so we are very fortunate to have Lori, and she is well deserving of this award.
Thank you. Can we talk you into a few words?
Oh, I don't know. I usually have a lot of words, but they surprised me with that last week. I don't think I do anything different or unusual despite what Crystal -- I'm going to cry again. Despite what Crystal says, can I take this off?
Sure.
Sorry. I just try to do my job the best I can, and trying to make a difference in domestic violence feels a lot of times like you're banging your head against a wall. But every once in a while, you get the one person, and that's who you fight for. So, all hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do. It's unfortunate that we live in a world where your job is needed, but we really appreciate your compassion and your dedication to looking out for those who really can't look out for themselves most of the time. So, thank you very much. Now, we're all crying, so you can go.
Start the meeting with tears.
All right, thank you. So, that takes us back to routine business.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Karski.
I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda by removing Item 17, authorize the chair to sign an interim agreement with JLG Architects for administration building and extension building renovations.
Second.
Motion and a second. I just note that we will be bringing that back next week, so I don't want people out there who are listening to despair that somehow we've gotten rid of that project. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, wait, no, roll call vote, sorry.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. So, next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for October 13th, 2020.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $891,918.27.
Pay the bills.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments regarding the bills?
No comments.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. I recommend for your reapproval, a number of the reports that are provided. We have reports from Children's Inn. I'm not sure if there's anyone from the auditor's office here today. Oh, Vicky, sorry, didn't see you back there.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicky Hewitt from the auditor's office. Here with some September financial information, starting out with the general fund cash balance at $12.1 million, about $4.4 million over last year. That does include about $1.3 million of CARES Act COVID funds from the state received in September. The highway fund cash balance at $6,020,000, about $4.4 million under last year, just continued project spend down there. Expenditures, total expenditures at 71.5% of budget, about a percent under last year. The personnel portion of that at $31.8 million, 71.9% of budget, again, under budget from last year. And other expenses are at 70.7%, about 3% over budget. So, we've had continued under-budget departments, like, for example, courts is at about 58% compared to like 89% last year, so that is keeping our expenditures at that under-budget level. Revenues, total revenue at $40,499,063.6% of budget, a couple percent over last year. Year-to-date taxes are at $26.3 million, relatively even with last year. And then other revenues at $14.1 million, 83.5% of budget, so about 6% over last year. So, our revenues continue to stay steady with our property taxes being mostly from escrow. That's helping to keep that on track, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Vicky? Thank you very much.
Madam?
Oh, Commissioner Bar.
Madam Chair, this is Jim.
Yes, sir.
I just want to comment that paying taxes can be very difficult for a lot of people right now during our virus issue. And it's not just individuals that have to pay taxes, it's businesses. So, if you own a hotel, if you own a restaurant, if you own an apartment building, all those people, whether they have revenue or not, have to pay their taxes, and it's a difficult issue for them. It's not just for a citizen who's being threatened with the cutoff of their electricity. Those expenses continue, and I think in going forward, we have to do something about it.
We agree that it's difficult. I just want to clarify for folks that might be listening, because we have had a few calls, is that, you know, the county commission has no authority on its own to make decisions about whether taxes are payable or not. That's all established under state law, and I'd also point out that the county receives the smallest portion of your property taxes. Most of those property taxes are distributed out to other governmental entities, including the school district and the city. So, just, we recognize that this is a difficult time for a lot of property owners, but, you know, that solution is something we would need to address possibly with the legislators in peer. That's not something that we have any authority over, so. All right, anything else? All right, thank you very much, Vicky. All right, that takes us to Item 5. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bessa?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item 6, abatements, there are none. Item 7, notices and requests, there are none. Item 8, planning and zoning notices, there are none. And Item 9, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So, this is an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to regular business. Our first item of regular business is a briefing on the 2020 general election and absentee voting. Auditor Litz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and I apologize for not having an agenda thing put together for you, but it was shifting a little bit, and I just really got busy, so I hope you'll accept my comments here as that agenda. And if you need more information outside of what we talk about here today, don't hesitate to get ahold of my office. The absentee ballots, as of this morning before 8:00, were at 27,539. So, we've still got, what, 15 days or so to go before the election, 13 days, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But, you know, back in 2016, which was the largest open presidential election this county ever had, back then, we had 18,262 ballots, so we're going to far surpass that, I think.
Is that the received number, excuse me, the received number, or is that the number you mailed out?
That is the number that we have received today.
You've received 27,000.
That have walked in, voted, and dropped off at the ballot boxes, and have mailed them back, which those ballot boxes, a lot of folks seem to like it. I've got comments, some other people wouldn't trust them, but by and large, they've been very successful. People walk up, drop them in there, and I've been getting the ballots out of there at least a couple times a day, and then on the weekends, I'll come down three times and I get the ballots out of there and lock them up just as a precaution, so. But the box has been working out quite well. Our total, you know, so that's the absentee ballots. In our voter registration, the active and inactives today, we have 140,724. Now, and out of that, 123 are active. So, in 2016, the comparable thing, I had 118,000, a little bit over that, of active and inactive. So, if we look at the, back then, the actives were about 109 as compared to 123,512 today. So, voter registrations are up for both parties and independents. I don't know how that's going to translate into voting, if they're going to come down here at the polls or what, but voter registrations are up in this county. We also, normally for an election this size, we have oh, 250, 260 military overseas ballots. We're at 540 today. Yesterday was the final day of the voter registration, and it was hell day down in my office. The phone just did not stop ringing. People showed up at the windows. We got it handled, but it was a stressful day for everybody down there. It was very difficult. But, you know, that rush of people coming down on the last day to do the voter registration, and it's like, you know, they came down. But if that's any indication of human nature, and I believe it is, I'm probably going to have the same thing for the ballots, the mail ballots getting dropped in the ballot box and in the mail that last week. I think we've got a plan in place to deal with that by and large. It includes working through the weekend for the people who process those ballots. Of course, we have to take them right up until Election Day, until 7:00 Election Day, so we'll see about those stragglers. But the mail-in type, the ones that get in the box, I think we're a little bit better prepared to handle that surge than we were. You know, last time, we had people, a lot of people that were part-timers, they came in during the afternoon and worked till late at night. But this time here, we've had a staff on all day, and I wouldn't call them whirling dervishes, but they've certainly been steady and keeping up at this point, okay? So, this is my appeal to the public. If you've got a ballot out there, it's mailed or whatever, fill it out, take the time, and get it back down here, and don't be part of the problem when it comes to getting close to the election. Do your duty. And I would also say that, you know, if you've got a ballot out there, if you've got, you know, something that you want to mail into us, if you're within 10 days of that election, you better think about something besides mailing, because the mail has been all over the place, to be honest with you, and we've had some things that have not been delivered at all, and so we've been sending out a lot of duplicate ballots, absentee ballot things. We've not received voter registration things, and I have no answer for it, but like I said, if you're within 10 days of the election, you've got something, you've got to get to us, you better get the Pony Express, or come on down here, or do something besides the mail. Are there any questions about anything I've said so far? Okay.
Commissioner Benega.
Bob, when we talked last week, and I'm glad you reminded me, but there's a lot of people that have the misperception that if their ballot is postmarked before November 3rd, it's counted, which is totally incorrect, obviously, and I think there's some confusion between hand-delivering it and getting it mailed by that date. So, I don't know what more we can do or what you've already done, but it's crazy that we still think that way, frankly.
You know, it's kind of like the voter registrations that we had yesterday. If you didn't have it in by 5:00 yesterday into my office, that doesn't mean in the mail. We're, you know, we're going to sign you up for the next one, and the ballots will be the same way. They have to be in the auditor's hands by 7:00 on Election Day.
7:00 AM?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay. Commissioner Hiberger.
Bob, do you have a number on how many absentee ballots you've mailed out? You told us how many have returned. Do you know how many have been mailed out?
Oh, you know, I could get that for you, but I don't know. It's generally running about a third more than that number. If I look at, because I did a breakdown of all the precincts and kind of looked at how many ballots we sent out as opposed, and let's say you had 650 ballots that we had sent out, and I might have 450 or 425 that have been returned. So, roughly a third, you know, a quarter to a third of ballots that we mail out are not back yet, and I don't know if that's an indication of what's going on. One thing I would tell you that adds to those numbers is we've had a lot of people come down and vote over here, and they had an absentee ballot, and that is okay, but don't try to vote it twice, of course. And we've been telling them, if you've got a mail ballot, to destroy the ballot, and I tell them, destroy the envelope too, because to me, that envelope is just as important than the ballot for the mail-in process. But if you do that, if you don't vote that mail ballot, you can go to your precinct on Election Day and vote there, and it will be marked in the poll book by your name if you've received a ballot or a ballot sent, it will say that. And if you voted, it will say that too, okay? So, we'll know about your status, but it's okay. If you've got a mail ballot, you don't want to do that, and you want to walk in over here anytime, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, or if you want to go to your precinct on Election Day, hours 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Does that answer you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I want to talk about the absentee boards, the opening boards that I have. In 2016, I look back, and I had 88 people. I had opening the ballots on that day. We started, you know, by the time we got started, it was probably about 9:00, and then we finished the last one of those that day about 8:00 PM, which was great, because that machine we had counting absentee ballots that day, it was tied up doing that, and then the precinct ones were just starting to come in. So, we had the other two machines set up for the precinct, you know, the Election Day ballots. And, you know, it didn't take very long for us to finish off those absentee ballots and go have all three machines on the Election Day ballots, which was very nice. So, that was 88 people back in 2016. We finished pretty good. This year here, for November 3rd, which is going to be Election Day, I've, from the, I got a shift of openers, absentee boards, from 8:00 till 5:00, and that'll be 112 people on that board. And then, from 5:00 until midnight, I've got another 112 people that will be opening on that day. And then the following day, on November 4th, the 8:00 to 5:00, I've got another 112 people coming to about 336 people opening ballots, and that is my response that I can do, that I have control of on these absentee ballots. The thing, though, that I would tell you is that we're not going to be ready to process absentee ballots the morning of Election Day. And so, we are going to have the opening board going after it, getting those ballots prepared, and then in the evening, about, you know, quarter to 8:00, 8:00, we will start processing the Election Day ballots that happened out in the precinct, and we will go until those ballots are finished, and then we are going to break down. And we will come back at 8:00 in the morning, and that other board will be resuming, and we will hope to run all those absentee ballots. And I would, I'm going to anticipate, you know, the Election Day ballots and the absentee ballots, we're going to probably have twice as many Election Day as we will absentee. But the benefit of doing that is ballot management. We will not have a bunch of little batches. We'll have all the precincts on the absentee ready to go, and it means a lot more for accuracy. We don't have to reconfigure the machines, and, you know, we thought long and hard about it, getting some results out that night, and we'll have them with the polling place, ballots that we do that day. But the absentees, I'm afraid we're just going to have to wait until the night of the 4th there before we have our results.
Questions. Commissioner Benega.
Well, Bob, you answered most of my questions, and I do appreciate all the work and frankly, stress that goes into this election process. Last time, you had a number of educational professionals who frankly weren't working at the time, and you had those as a volunteer and employee resource to help you. Are you still taking new applicants, if you will, to be able to try to continue to keep up with what you're doing?
I always will take new applicants that want to work elections. Now, and if I can't fit you in this one here, and it looks like I've got a pool, a draw-on pool of about 55, 57 people, if I remember, I, you know, but anyway, those people will be there, you know, as time goes on here, we've got these 13, 15 days or whatever it is, things happen out there, and so we'll have those, that pool to draw from on that, as, you know, for the precincts, and we'll have that pool to draw on as far as the absentee boards go. But I will take anybody's information that wants to work elections. We are storing it in a database for the next person and the next, you know, generation of what's going on out there. The teachers, it's true, they've gone back to work, but the response to the appeals for election workers has just been phenomenal. And for a while, it was all Ds, which was great. Normally, I have trouble getting Dems to volunteer, but they stepped up early and big. But lately, I've had a lot more Republicans and independents, it seems like, that have volunteered. We'll still take your application, and there's a chance that you could go to work, depending on what happens. You know, and to that, I would tell you, we're all looking at these COVID numbers going up, and, you know, we may experience some changes going forward in these next couple of weeks. I don't know that, but I've got to be prepared for it, and that pool would also be a resource to draw on should people not want to come to work due to the COVID situation. You know, I would also tell you, normally, for an election, a presidential election like this, we have a little under 500 workers. This time here, it's going to be over 800. And just to assize your fears there a little bit, I wanted to tell you that I did get one grant for $91,000, and I got another one for $31,000. Now, that'll help take the edge off. It's certainly not going to cover everything, but it will take those expenses down a little bit.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you, Bob. When you started talking about yesterday and how busy you were down there, I was, looked at Olivia, and she's just sitting over there nodding her head, so. And I did stop by yesterday, dropped off my reports, and it was a hub of activity. I appreciate the work you do, but especially your staff. I know they're working hard, and for the next couple of weeks at least, they're going to be burning the candle at both ends, and we, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we do thank them. Couple of questions for you. Absentee ballots that you have now, they're in a safe, correct?
They are locked up in a room that is pretty safe, and I put new locks on those rooms, and only I have the keys for them. They're not per se in a vault itself.
Okay, okay.
But, no, they're secure.
Are they separated by precinct then, or is anything?
They are alphabetized and separated by precinct. And if you're talking about the ballots that, you know, are ready to go to be opened, yes, they are.
They are, okay. So, my next concern, and I've heard this from other people too, is November 3rd is the election, November 4th, I'm imagining overnight, there's not going to be anybody in that room counting, so what are you doing about the security of those ballots during that break from November 3rd to November 4th? Who has access to that room? How are they protected?
Sheriff Milstead and I had a conversation about this very topic yesterday, and we both agreed that as it got a little closer, we're going to talk about whether we want a guy in a sleeping bag inside of both of those buildings or just an increased presence, somebody sitting in a car outside of there and upping the presence. And when we decide that, I'm probably not going to talk about it in public, but it's been considered, Commissioner, I want you to know that, it's on top of my mind. You know, the other thing, you know, everybody's kind of worried about poll watchers and observers, but I believe we're going to have South Dakota nice out there. I don't think we're going to have those kind of incidents. So, the security breaches, you know, they could happen, you know, just about any place, but for Election Night, I think we've kind of got a plan in place, and we're going to look at it a little bit closer when we get there and decide whether we want somebody inside the buildings, or, you know, if we just want that, you know, in the parking lot in a car type thing, yes.
Just a little clarification. So, when we were talking about counting ballots, will there be a partial, possible, partial number available on the 3rd?
On Election Night? Yes, there will. The Election Day ballots come in from the precinct will be uploaded. Yes, they will.
Okay.
And they will be listed as a partial, because the way our software works is the Election Day ballots have to be uploaded separately from the absentees. It's two different processes, and that helps us track everything, but it does also cause issues. And normally, we would enter our absentees first, and so that would be listed as partial results, and you could always kind of tell, because those numbers were lower. And then as we entered the precincts on Election Night, that would go by and merge with the absentee numbers, and then you'd have your totals.
Just wrong.
Yeah, but I think we're going to be flipped on that this time here, so.
Commissioner Karski.
Kind of hesitant to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I want my vote to count on Election Day, so I'm going to vote at the precinct on Election Day, because I know that night, my vote will show up. It'll, the next day is when all the rest of the 35, 45% of the absentee ballots that are counted, so it's just my own personal preference. I'm feeling good about going to vote. I think you're going to have good people working at the precincts, and I'm just looking forward to doing my vote on Election Day in person.
And Mr. Karski, I don't care how you do it, we just want you to do it, and I'm going to get that ballot, and we are going to count them. We're going to count them all, okay? Period.
Other questions? Well, I'd also like to echo thanks to you and to your staff. You know, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the incredible amount of work that goes into it and the attention to detail that you and your staff pay to every single vote to make sure that it's counted and that there aren't any shenanigans and that you only vote once. And I would really encourage people, it's easy to sit back and take pot shots at the process, and if you're one of those people, then volunteer, put your hand up and come down and help, because it takes an army to get this done. And the process has changed. And the process has changed. A lot of people, unlike Commissioner Karski, are really taking advantage of the ability to vote by mail. It's a tremendous opportunity, as you're seeing. It's really, I think, increasing voter turnout, which is in the benefit of everybody. But that is a very time-consuming process on the end of your office. And so that's why folks need to just expect with change, there's all kinds of changes. And if we're going to, um, use these kind of, you know, ballots by mail, then we need to be a little more patient in waiting for results. It's really not the time that we get the results. It's the accuracy that we know that we can trust that democracy is at work and that, um, that everything was counted accurately. And if that takes an extra day, an extra two days, it's not the end of the world. What matters is that everybody has confidence in the system at the end. So I really appreciate your commitment to that.
And then we hope we, our office exudes that. My staff has just been awesome. I cannot tell you the appreciation that I have for the work that has gone on down there, way above anything that we could have possibly imagined four years ago, say. Uh, but they've rose to the occasion, and, uh, I, I can't say enough good about them and their expertise and their calmness and the manners. And I can't say I've always been calm. Sometimes I run around with my hair on fire, but, you know, uh, somehow the ship comes into the dock every night. Um, and, and, you know, the idea that we've got Democrats, independents, and Republicans all working together for this election, there's no good, there's not going to be any shenanigans. You know, the Democrats won't let the Republicans, you know, nobody's going to let anybody do any, any goofy things out there. You know, a couple of, a couple of ideas about, uh, you know, elections that, and I, I want to bring this up here. It's, these are personal observations, but for some reason, elections are the thing that, you know, there's, they're so, everybody says they're so important, but everybody rolls it all up, puts a bow on it, sets it out there and go, there you are on election night. And for some reason, uh, we've convinced ourselves, a lot of people have, that getting those results, election night, is the only way to roll. But I would, I would, I would tell you that there are other ways of doing that and involving people from both parties and judges and officials. If it takes longer and you're more accurate, you can still come out with a good count on those ballots, maybe even better than what's in that, that bow in the box. And I would tell you, election night, there ain't an auditor in this state that when we, they put that, those final numbers out there, they put them out there, they're glad to have them out there. But they're just kind of going, yeah, you know, there's one or two things out there, you know, and it's nothing big, widespread. It's usually human error. Uh, but, you know, to, to track all that down, it does take time. Election day itself, uh, you know, it's always on Tuesday. Everybody knows that. We have it on Tuesday. And the reason elections are on Tuesdays is because way back in the day, the eighteen fifties, and I can't remember exactly when that came about. It was sometime before the Civil War. Only white landed men could vote. And the, the theory was on Sunday, you're in church, Monday, you ride to town, Tuesday, you vote, get your hardware and go back. And so our idea of having elections on Tuesday, um, are based on some, probably some outdated concepts out of, you know, a white man landed, owns land, uh, you know, and then women didn't get to vote back then. So, uh, there's, there's some, you know, the, the idea of having that election on Tuesday itself, uh, you know, there's no really good reason for having it. And, uh, my thoughts are, is, you know, if we have election weekend where we do it Saturday and Sunday, uh, people that work, they're more at ease to come down here and vote. Uh, we'd have a little bit longer time to get everything wrapped up. Uh, you know, there's other alternatives to the way things are right now. Do I, am I hopeful that anything's going to change in that arena in the near future? No, I don't. But those are just some things that maybe a person wants to think about going down the road, so. Um, is there any other questions that I could talk about?
Thank you very much for coming this morning. I know that this is a tremendously busy time, so we appreciate you taking a few minutes to come up and, and help everybody get educated.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eleven, which is a motion to appoint individuals to the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. Carol, and we have Shelley. So we'll let them go one at a time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller from the Commission Office. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners authorized a joint powers agreement for the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. The mutual recommendation by the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County was to dissolve the Homeless Advisory Board. In addition, the city would dissolve the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. In place of these two existing boards, the city and the county mutually would create the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, known as Ahab. And the purpose of the Joint Powers Agreement and Ahab is for cooperative efforts towards creation of affordable housing, housing stabilization services, and alleviating homelessness. The Accessible Housing Advisory Board will be comprised of eleven members. And on that, that we're asking for you to point today would be Commissioner Bender as representative of the Minnehaha County Commission, Human Services Director Carrie Benz as a member of the Minnehaha County staff, and from the public, Minnehaha County residents Jeff Nelson, Joan Franken, Aspen Thorstensen, Paul Kastbooth, and Nancy Reynosa. So, um, attached to that is a briefing memo from Shelley Unruh, who's on today for the Zoom call. And if you've got any questions, you can certainly help address her. She's been the point person on putting this work together.
Any questions for Shelley? Shelley, did you want to, do you have any comments you want to make?
Um, yeah, thanks, um, for letting me, um, call in today and speak briefly about this, um, important board that we've created as a collaboration between, um, Minnehaha County um and the City of Sioux Falls. Um, one note, um, as I'm looking at this memo that's displayed on the screen, um, at the very top where it says action requested, I noticed that I did not change, um, Tara Allen to Aspen Thorstensen at that point. I believe it's changed, um, further down in the memo, but, but not on that very, um, first line. Um, so just want to note that change, that the person being recommended is Aspen Thorstensen, um, with the Stone Group Architects. So apologize for that, um, oversight as far as making that correction. Um, but we've been working on this initiative, um, for almost a year now and excited to, um, have this board in place as there are many important housing, um, initiatives that, um, this board will assist with, including response to, um, the coronavirus. So I'd be happy to take any questions, um, that anybody should have.
Any questions? Well, I'd just say that Shelley, thank you. You've, um, you've really carried the load on this. I know, uh, back in March, we thought we were, uh, really poised to get it done, and then COVID hit. And then, um, you know, putting together a brand-new board like this takes a lot of work. And Shelley has really done all the heavy lifting on that. So I think we are all excited about, um, the opportunity to take this new and energized boy, board and really make an impact on affordable housing in, um, Minnehaha County and, uh, the greater Sioux Falls area. So, thank you. And if there aren't any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I have to make a motion to approve the list that's on the bottom of page two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Farth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Shelley. All right. That takes us to item twelve, which is a motion to declare information technologies equipment surplus. Monty?
Yeah, this is, uh, Monty Wadambak with, uh, Information Technology on the phone. The equipment, um, that's on the list, um, is old and has no value. Um, the IB, IBM equipment, um, licenses were transferred, so that equipment should not be sold. And that's why it did not go to previous, um, uh, auctions. So we're just, uh, requesting that, uh, we can take this to the recycling center.
Any questions for Monty?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Farth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Monty. That takes us to item thirteen, which is an equalization department briefing. Chris Lilly, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Chris Lilly, Director of Equalization. Just wanted to come before you today, excuse me, and give you some information on what our office has been doing, completing some of the changes that have occurred unbeknownst to us requesting them or, or the desirability of those. Um, so I've, I've put together kind of just a, a broad overview bullet point topics briefing. Um, the first one I'd like to touch on is our assessment notices. As everyone, as, as every taxpayer is aware, and the County Commission, in the past years, we've always sent out just a postcard assessment notice, um, which has worked. It's, it's been fundamentally fine. With our transition, not for twenty-one, pay twenty-two, we're not quite ready yet, but for twenty-two, pay twenty-three, we're going to transition to our, our in-code software. That already in and of itself changes the assessment notice. So what has occurred this year is the legislators, um, which I didn't know about until after the fact, opted to add some other additional statements onto the assessment notice requirements that there was no room on the postcard to fit. So as soon as I discovered that, I, I got with Dawn with IT, and I want to tell you, I want to give Dawn credit upon credit upon credit. I proposed some, some stuff to her. I said, look, we're, we're going to be going on to in-code. In-code is already going to be an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper. Can we make that come for our final year on eight-and-a-half-by-eleven out of AS four hundred and basically mirror what in-code will be? Um, I've provided you some, some templates. She knocked it out of the park. This is exactly what it's going to look like when we, in twenty-two. The ones that she's generated now are out of AS four hundred. Now, mind you, I've whited out some stuff just because she pulled data, but this is a, a fictitional assessment notices at these times. These values are not there. But this is the look. So on these assessment notices, um, as opposed to the postcards, you'll see if it's residential, meaning non-owner occupied, that value will be in that line. They're, they're color-coded. If it's owner occupied, that value will show on that line. Some of the other highlights of this, also on the old postcards, you never saw your true exemption amount. You just saw a taxable amount. Now you will see your full and true value for your land and/or buildings, and if there's exemptions, and what that exemption is. And then your, what we would call taxable or equalized value, not equalized taxable value at the end. So, um, she's kind of put together a smattering of different examples. If anyone has any questions on them or would like to look at those, um, or want more detail on those, I'd be happy to explain those a little bit more. One of the other highlights with this, on postcards, it was one-to-one parcel. If you own a parcel, you got a postcard. Now, under this, as well as in-code, you can have up to four parcels per page. So now the downside, postcards were cheap. The downside is, is the expense of doing it this way now. Uh, obviously, I knew we would have an expense with envelopes. And I've got some cost on envelopes. Total cost looks like it's going to cost us just under fifteen hundred dollars for envelopes. Then the difference in postage between postcards and letters, that is huge, and the processing fee. I was hoping, um, it would kind of wash itself out, but my preliminary estimates are right now, which I was unable to budget for because we didn't know about this, is going to add an increase of about twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. Now, that is on the high end. I padded these numbers by about five hundred. We're hoping to cut that down because we are scrubbing through our list right now. So if you own ten properties and four of them are deeded one way, and four of them have a middle initial, and four of them have a typo or a s, extra space, they're each going to get their own page. We are consolidating and cleaning up those address, excuse me, cleaning up those addresses to get as many to print per page. So every time we can combine one, that's an envelope, that's postage, that's processing. So the twenty thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty is the high, high-end increase. And everything we can do from here until March first chops that, that value down, and we're doing our due diligence and working on that. Any questions on those? Oh, um, so also, I included a draft, so, um, I don't know who's running that thing. It's the back page. That's what will actually print on the back of the assessment notice. So this is all the state requirement now. Let's see if that comes. There's quite a few examples in there of assessment notices. Again, I, I want to just commend Dawn and IT. She, she absolutely drilled that. This is all her work, putting this together and compiling this. She really knocked it out of the park. There we go. So this is all the requirements that are required to be on the assessment notice now. So the top part, that top paragraph was there, that assessors notice the property owners, that was there. And that's what had to fit on the postcard. Now, this year, the whole bottom where it starts at property tax relief programs are available. That is all new verbiage, verbatim, that is required. In my, and I would point out, in my memo, I stated that there's five required. On this draft, there's six. I haven't got clarification yet on the number six item. The, uh, that's the municipal property tax reduction is currently only available to Rapid City residents at this time. So I'm not sure if that's going to be a requirement for us or not. That's why I listed five for us. But as you can clearly see, what we had fit on a postcard, now we've doubled that. It was not going to fit. So we had to improvise and adapt, and, and we did the best we could, and I, and I think it's really going to benefit the taxpayers moving forward. Any questions on?
Mr. Bennega?
Since we're all creatures of habit, do you think it's going to be reasonable for us to send a note with this or on this to say that they no longer will be receiving the postcard? Or you'll be getting multiple calls saying, where's my postcard?
You know, I don't know. I hadn't really thought about that. Um, the assessment notice, there, I, as far as I understand, there really is no, other than the verbiage that's on there and obviously the, the information on there, there is no format directive within the state. Um, it depends on what software you're utilizing that dictates how you, how you present that to the taxpayer. Um, the law just says assessment notice. So, um, I, I, I can certainly, we can add a letter in there stating, letting them know that this is replacing the former portion. Oh, one other thing I would point out, too. Um, we're anticipating doing this on a, on a kind of a manila-colored paper. It'll be kind of a yellowish. That should differentiate between the tax bill and the assessment notice, especially when we get on both the treasure and us fully out on in-code. We don't want that. That's, that's always a cue for us when somebody comes in and says, hey, my value changed. I'm looking and saying, you've got a white piece of paper comparing to a yellow. This one's equalized. This one's full and true. That's a good indicator that we're going to offset those so that it's very representative. But as far as notifying those, no, I hadn't really considered that. I, I mean, we could put a letter in with that assessment notice. I don't know what that would do for our cost for the paper. Obviously, we're still mailing the envelope. Some of the things, in order to stay under that thirty-two, I think it's thirty-two cent rate, is about four pages per envelope. If we add another one, it could shift that and, and increase our cost.
I think even just like a big red stamp on the top of it or on the envelope, you know, don't, the assessment notice, so people don't, you know, the letters get tossed in, in the trash sometimes, and I think people aren't necessarily looking for that. And so, like Commissioner Bennega said, I think anything we can do, even if it costs a little bit more on postage, it's going to save, um, personnel time and answering phone calls and questions and irritation by taxpayers. I think it would be worth it at this point.
I really like that idea, and thank you for, for offering that. We have not ordered our envelopes yet, and so we are, we're getting some bids on that. We, we anticipated going through McLeod's, but we currently go through a local vendor here. I'm not sure where. They're both pretty comparative as far as prices go. But since we have not ordered, or ordered those notice envelopes yet, I think we can probably have something printed on specifically on those assessment notice important. Some verbiage right on the envelope itself to notify taxpayers.
I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I made a note of that, so thank you for that suggestion.
Sometimes if you don't pay attention, you get hit in the head with something.
I think we'll do better with envelopes with the public in retaining them as opposed to postcards. I think those were too small and get shifted and shuffled and lost, and they don't fit anywhere. They don't fit in a file. So hopefully this will be an improvement over, over past practices.
Well, certainly you're providing a lot of great information in this letter that we weren't able to provide before. So I think that is a tremendous benefit. I think sometimes, you know, I've been on the Commission almost six years now. Every time anybody mentions Dawn's name, it's always with comments like knocked it out of the park. And I think someday we need to get her some kind of like superwoman outfit and, and bring her in here. Because I can, I've hardly ever seen her in six years, but I just hear about how amazing she is.
I will take no credit for this. I, this is Dawn. I just, I got some examples from in-code, and I, I said, way early on, I said, Dawn, what do you think? Can we do this coming out of AS four hundred? Can we make it look like in-code so that we don't have a postcard, then something, then something else? And like I said, she nailed it. And it was a, she is so efficient. She did an outstanding job, so I, I give her all the credit in the world.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any further questions or comments on, on assessment notices? Okay. So then the rest of this stuff is kind of things that we've been working on that I, you know, and I've been in touch with Dean on a lot of this, but I don't really get to touch base with the rest of the Commission, and maybe I should send that out. But, um, neighborhood splitting, I know we've mentioned this last year. That was one of the goals that we wanted to do. We, there's probably going to be some finite adjustments to this as we split neighborhoods. But a, as I've mentioned to the Commission before, we had super-large neighborhoods. I mean, twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred parcel neighborhoods to study, which is great. The difference is some of these are two and three miles long in jurisdiction, and so we're comparing, you know, Fifty-seventh Street clear up past Forty-first Street, for instance, as, as a comparison area. Well, there's different, different strata and governmental obsolescences and division lines and homogenous things to consider. So we've really, my appraisers did a great job. We printed out all their neighborhoods and maps. I kind of wanted to target about seven hundred parcels or less, um, as study group areas. They've taken it upon themselves to really delve into their maps and decide where, for instance, if you've got a neighborhood that's got million-dollar homes and you've got two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, that's not the same neighborhood. They're two different neighborhoods. We need to study, though, differently, and we did not have that ability or capability to really do that before. So I'm happy to report that for right now, we feel pretty confident we have split everything up. I always use Brandon as a great example. Brandon was one neighborhood. Brandon is now ten neighborhoods. We are going to look at Brandon ten different ways. That should really, really, really equalize our numbers. You will not be compared against somebody two miles away, a brand-new house compared to your old house. That won't happen. You're going to be compared to a smaller strata or subgroup within your locale. That should really help us out. So we've pretty much completed all of that on the residential side. The only thing we haven't really looked at right now is the townships, which that will be coming. We're just limited on time. Probably the biggest thing, which I should have maybe made number one, is our conversion from AS four hundred to ProVal. We're not quite there yet, but we are just under a thousand parcels left to. We would have been done had we not had to shift gears onto building permits. We have made some great, great strides this year. All things, all properties will be valued out of ProVal this year. We still need AS four hundred. Yes?
When you were hired, Chris, how many weren't converted to ProVal?
Twenty-seven thousand and change.
So you went from twenty-seven thousand down to a thousand?
Yeah, out of seventy-five thousand parcels, there was a third left to convert after twenty years. We've completed, we will complete that within two years now. It's been a, it's been a process. You, you know, and with that, I just want to point to the commission. It, it isn't a perfect system. We're converting data from one program to make sure it's equal and, and into the other program. There is going to be some fluctuations. There was adjustments placed in an old program that made people lower in value or adjusted them higher in value. When we move them into the new program, what I can affirm to you is they are treated fairly and equally. There's going to be some shifting. Can't do anything about that. It, it just is what it is. We got to rip the Band-Aid off once. The new program doesn't care. Any, any personal obsolescence or adjustments made in the past may have been valid. They may not be valid now. We don't know. We are just looking at the data to data. Once that's done, that first one is kind of the tough one to swallow. After that, anytime there's an adjustment made, it is an equal adjustment. If there's a neighborhood that goes up four percent, everyone will increase four percent. Not one going up twenty and one going up one, or one going down. So I just want to warn everyone, there, there will be some, some shifts, but it is for the better. It is equalizing. So that is, that is a big one. I wish I could report that we were done. We've been pushing, but we're under a thousand. Basically, we have Split Rock Township left. The houses have, I've already completed the houses. We're just waiting on the outbuildings. And the good news with that is there's not as many farms, so when you get to a parcel that has an outbuilding, it's a detached garage or a pole building. It's a very fast, it's just when we can get there and, and look at the two programs and make sure the measurements are right, the, the framing is right, the materials are right, and all of that. So it's a slow kind of process, but we're getting there. Yes?
Commissioner Karski.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. I am Chris's liaison, and I do meet with Chris. We've been through all this stuff. When we hired, when we hired you, we asked you to do some very specific things, and you made promises, and you've been very good on delivering. Change isn't easy. It doesn't matter if it's the assessment notices or data in a computer program. One thing I will say about Chris, he's very concerned about having accurate and justifiable data to, that he can stand behind and say, this is why you're doing it. We're doing it consistently across the board. We're treating people equally and fairly. I think he's doing a good job in his, in his role. Again, it, that Band-Aid, sometimes it just doesn't come out without a, a little bit of pain, but in the end, I think we're going to be in a much better place. So thank you for what you've been doing.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Did you have a few more things you want to talk about?
Yep, yep. The next thing I just wanted to mention to you, again, this is in the process. It was in my goals, commercial building model. We haven't got that built yet, and I don't know if we'll utilize it this year, but I just wanted to bring it up, not only for the commissioners, but for the public. It's, it's a tool that we are going to utilize. We have scrubbed our list. We're limited to ninety-nine different characters, if you will, of, of commercial building types. So this is going to be a very additive process for equalizing our commercial when we get there. What this does is we're able to, not only, we've got all these neighborhoods, so we've got a commercial area, and then we've got another commercial area and another one. Right now, that area is valued against its stealth, which is the way it's supposed to be. The difference is, when we get into commercial, you've got commercial building types. You've got a bank or a fast food that are in all these separate neighborhoods, and so we analyze this neighborhood, and maybe this one has to go up ten percent, and then we have to analyze this neighborhood, and it has to go down ten percent. And all of a sudden, we've got the same building, under the same commercial use, under the same age, being valued differently. There's, there's unequalization, if you will. It's equal within its neighborhood, but when you span, whenever you look at any commercial appraisal practices, they're not going to look at just this. They're going to come to Sioux Falls and say, what is a, what is a Taco John's worth in Sioux Falls? This is the area. So what this model will do for us is allow us to pull all of these across neighborhoods and balance equality. So now, if, if I need to go up five percent on my fast food, for instance, the market says we need to go up, I could go up five percent. Maybe we need to go down ten percent on our car washes. It won't be just in that neighborhood. We will be able to go in there and make that modification in the model and cross neighborhoods. It's going to really bring some efficiency. It's going to bring some equalization. It's been on my to-do list. My commercial appraisers did a wonderful job going through. They've cleaned a lot of data up, making sure that it's all organized and ordered, valid, and again, I, I was told them I use the example of like our bathtubs. You have a bathtub with jets, you have a jetted bathtub, you have a, have a jacuzzi, you have a whirlpool, you have this. There's ninety different ways to call it the same thing. They have cleaned all that up, and they've got our list down to, I think, eighty-eight out of, we had ninety-nine available. So they have, just in that alone, should create some equalization by calling things the same, grouping them. So just wanted to bring some attention that, I don't know if we'll utilize it this year or not, but we're going to have that tool available for sure next year to really delve in as we start our, our review process and give them some ability to, to really analyze and look at data for commercial properties for equalization. So. The next one that I had was house type modeling. So this is kind of like a commercial model. So we've split our neighborhoods from large down to small. Well, we're not done there. We may have a neighborhood of, of brand-new homes and old homes, and the difference between those, the costs are all the same. The difference is the depreciation. It's, it's the age of the home. And as the older we get, our depreciation tables start drifting away from accuracy, if you will. So we are developing house types. We're in our final testing. We had it ready to go, and then we converted ProVal, got our new model, and so we are retesting to make sure it's, it works. But we're going to, not only in a neighborhood, we're going to look at stripping a neighborhood down three ways. We're going to have older homes, mid-age homes, and newer homes. I can look at them all together, but I can also look at those independently within a neighborhood. So now we've got a smaller neighborhood, and we've got a mixture of new homes and old homes. My old homes, maybe I'm taking too much value away because of depreciation. I can increase just those and maybe not touch the new homes because they haven't depreciated. I can balance that load. So if, if I've got a, if I'm trying to be at a, at an eighty percent, or we'll just, we'll just say a, a ninety-four percent ratio, if I've got some that are a hundred and four and some that are eighty-four, well, I'm at ninety-four as an, as an average, but it's not right. I'm over on one and I'm under on others. Now I have the capability to bring these down and bring these up and, and create equalization. This is one of the things that was missing prior. We've been building it. We're testing it. We've determined, pulled our data and analyzed where our breakpoints are to look at that. Hopefully, within the next week or two, we'll be, again, with Dawn. She's been working with, with Angie to go through the script and the writing and double-checking and triple-checking, making sure that everything is going to go, and then we'll test that. But I feel very confident. And that is going to be a great tool for equalization. The next one is land conversion. This is another one that has been on the to-do process. I think we've got eight neighborhoods left to convert in Sioux Falls now, so this is taking front foot valuation method to square foot, which, for starters, is easier to understand for the public. I can say your land is twelve thousand square foot, theirs is ten, that's why yours is worth more. It makes way more sense to the public. It's easier to explain. And number two, there was a lot of different rates. We had a lot of years of different rates being applied within the front foot. So what we're finding is equalization drastically needed to be made up in land. So again, it's a conversion. We're taking it from front foot to square foot, trying to generally mimic the already established market values, but again, there's going to be some shifting. It shouldn't be too drastic. Most of those are within, within a couple hundred dollars here or there, but they don't always come out one-to-one. So it's going to be much, much cleaner, and at this point now, when we come in, there should be no arguing on your land value. You will be the same method rate as every one of your neighbors. If you're worth more, it's because you have more land. And that gives us, takes away one more variable that we have to account for. When everyone is finally equal, we can start dialing other, other things in and figuring out where discrepancies are within our software. We're going to be finishing that up. I would say by the end of the week, we'll have all of those done within Sioux Falls. Then we'll move on to the small towns. And then lastly, we'll look at the townships and see if conversion needs to be made. You know, those, then we're going to be looking at per acre rates, but smaller, then we'll be looking at square foot rates, things like that. So there's a lot more variables out there, so, but we'll be looking at to see if it's, if it's needed. And the last thing was the ProVal. I kind of alluded to it a little, little bit ago. Our ProVal software was way, way, way outdated. We finally worked with ProVal Support and our IT, and they did a wonderful job. I want to give Josh some credit. I, we had it scheduled to upgrade. ProVal pulled our database, ran through the update, said it went fine. Came here, and I happened to be, we got moved out a week because they came out with another release, and I was out in Rapid City for a school, and they did it, and I got an email, and my heart about sank that at two o'clock, ProVal Support had pulled out because things weren't working, and they couldn't figure it out on the live. And I got to give Josh in IT great credit. He said he wasn't ready to give up yet, so he went out on a limb and tried something. He uninstalled ProVal from his computer and then reinstalled it, and the update loaded just fine. So we were so far back, there was a, there was a, a patch or an update that wasn't taking, was missing. So we are fully updated. We are on the latest and greatest ProVal. There's a lot of amenities that come with that. Our pictometry, we are finally able to utilize within ProVal. We don't have to leave and go to another program. Just a lot of software cleanups that really help us in our efficiency within our office. So, and I can assure you, we will not be that far outdated again. But again, I just wanted to give some updates to what we've been doing. It's been a very, very busy year for our office, and we are doing the best we can, and the staff has been wonderful, and we're driving on, and we're trying to make our data much cleaner, much more fair, much more equal, and we're getting there.
Questions for Chris?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Commissioner Barth.
So Chris, you know, with the change in the economy with this virus going on, how does that affect evaluations? And I just give you the example of, you know, an apartment building that is not collecting rent, a restaurant that does not have customers. How does that all bleed together to make things, evaluations correct?
Well, right now, Jeff, I would say I don't really have my finger on the pulse of that yet. You know, we, we follow the market, so we haven't even begun to analyze that yet, so we will. Those are some of the things that will come out. I think what you're alluding to might hit our commercial a little bit heavier than our residential. What I can tell you on our residential, our job is pretty easy. The market is exploding, even with COVID, and I think the interest rates are a big part of that. I mean, there's houses, there's houses that aren't, aren't even on the market for an hour, and they're sold. And, and we've got one individual within our office that put his house on the market, listed it at two o'clock. By six o'clock, he'd already accepted an offer, ten thousand over his asking price. And there was more. He had to cancel showings and listings because he said I, we just needed to know what we had to work with. So the, the residential market is unbelievably strong right now. The commercial, we'll analyze that and see what, see what shakes out of that at the end of the year here. I don't really have a forecast on that right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Once again, we thank you for being here. That was really a lot of great information, so thanks for coming this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. That takes us to item fourteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign a right-of-way agreement for County Highway one forty-nine. DJ, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This is for the County Highway one forty-nine project. That will be our next major reconstruction project. This is for two parcels. It's the same landowner, and completing, completing the purchase of these H lots will bring us to twenty-one of twenty-two of our needed H lots, and thirty-nine of forty temporary easements and fifteen of fifteen permanent drainage easements. So we're almost done with the right-of-way negotiations for the project, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ? If not, it entertained a motion.
Moved. Second.
And a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi, workers?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item fifteen, which is a safety briefing. DJ?
I'm just waiting for it to get pulled up here. All right, Commissioners. Earlier in October, Jean Binder and I, she's the liaison for the Highway Department, we just had a regular update meeting between us, and I briefed her on some of the safety initiatives that the Highway Department has worked on, and she suggested that might be a good idea to brief the entire commission on this, and I thought that was also a good idea. So that's how this presentation came about. So I'll spend a few minutes going through some slides, and feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions or, or want to look at something a little bit closer. Do I do this? Okay, there we go. The, the image there shows a strategic plan that the Highway Department adopted in two thousand and thirteen, and I won't go through that entire document, but from that, from that document, the mission of the Highway Department is to provide a safe and efficient, reliable highway infrastructure system. One of our goals that we set for ourselves is to protect the safety of the public, our team members, and the workers who, who build and maintain our transportation system. And we set out several values for our department. One of the values is safety. We value safety by protecting the, and enhancing the safety of the public and our employees. So safety is really the backbone of how we conduct our business. Everything from selection of materials that we use on our pavements to the approvals of new access locations, equipment that we purchase or rent for our team members to perform maintenance. It's really kind of, like I said, the backbone of how we conduct, conduct our whole operations. Background, a short summary of some of the safety initiatives that we've undertaken, at least since I've been the Highway Superintendent. I started in two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and twelve, we started implementing FHWA-proven safety countermeasures, and I'll spend some time on some future slides talking about those. In two thousand and eight, FHWA began promoting certain infrastructure-oriented safety treatments and strategies that are chosen based on effectiveness and benefits to enhance the safety of, of America's roadways. And so we started implementing some of those in two thousand and twelve. And also in two thousand and twelve, we started participating in the Think Sign program. Since then, we've installed thirteen Think Signs, which means we've had thirteen fatalities on our roadway since then. In two thousand and thirteen, we adopted a safety-driven strategic plan. That was that strategic plan that was shown on the last slide. And in two thousand and sixteen, we completed our countywide signing project. As part of our countywide signing project, we installed over fourteen thousand three hundred signs throughout our entire county highway system and on the township system in the county. We also started striping six-inch stripes instead of four-inch stripes that year, and that's a big safety improvement, not only for people that are driving and looking at the stripes, but also for vehicles that are able to detect the edge lines for the roadway pavement. In two thousand and eighteen, we joined the Road to Zero Coalition. The coalition is comprised of one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven transportation agencies, law enforcement agencies, advocacy groups, associations, automakers, educators, insurance companies, and many others. And they have three goals. Well, they have the goal of eliminating all roadway fatalities by the year twenty fifty. They're going to do that three different ways. One, by doubling down on, on what works. We have a lot of research and, and information on what works to enhance roadway safety, and, and they're saying that we should double down and, and really focus on those things that we know what works. Additionally, we should advance technology, working with the automakers and the educators, the people that are doing this kind of research, looking for additional things, not only the stuff that we know what works, but additional things like autonomous vehicles or different safety features that we can implement on our roadway designs or the vehicles that we're driving out on the roadways. And then really above all, just prioritizing safety, making that something that's important when we're considering our designs for our roadways and project selection, too. In two thousand and twenty, we started construction of our first roadway reconstruction project that was prioritized using safety data. That's the seven-mile County Highway one forty-six recon- That's the seven-mile County Highway 146 reconstruction project that we're currently under construction on. And I've said it many times before, that project was selected not completely based on roadway condition, but because of the safety, safety statistics throughout our county highway system. Also in 2020, we conducted a site distance analysis. The site distance analysis was conducted by surveying the centerline profile of all our county highways and then using software to identify road segments that are out of compliance of our design standards. It's an ongoing project to determine the best course of action for the deficient sections. But we've got a whole bunch of additional data now that we can make some more safety decisions and, and improvements to the roadway system. So I, I said before, safety projects are, are data-driven. Safety projects are identified by using this data. And the data can be local data or it can be shared from larger areas when we don't have enough local data. The data is frequently represented using GIS mapping tools. We work closely with our planning department and with the State Department of Public Safety and Department of Transportation for developing different mapping tools for identifying different safety issues and, and trying to look at things different than what we've looked at before. Many of the safety projects we select are based on statistical probabilities and, and return on investment. Data-driven selections remove ambiguity due to personal agendas or political pressure. And that doesn't mean that we take out any input from, from staff or the governing boards or, or the public. It just provides facts that we can help make selections and, and help identify things that we're going to improve. The graphic there, that shows a, a crash, a crash tree diagram. Crash, crash tree diagrams are not only hard to say, but they're created based on crash data sets. Crash tree diagrams can be used as part of the systematic safety analysis process to help identify and, and select the safety types or the facility types where the focused crash types most frequently occur. At that point, engineers can begin selecting countermeasures to reduce the risk and severity of those types of crashes. An example would be, like most rural highway systems, are, we have a higher concentration of roadway departure crashes. Most of these crashes occur during the day and on straight road sections and dry pa, dry pavement. From that information that we developed from the crash tree diagrams, we can begin making decisions on different countermeasures that we can consider for improving the roadway safety. Going back to the FHWA proven safety countermeasures. Beginning in 2008, they started releasing these. This is the fir, the first set of countermeasures, those bullet points there. I'll just skip over the ones that are not applicable. There's some that are applicable to like urban environments or road sections that have medians and that kind of thing. And so not all of these are applicable to us, but I'll just go through the ones that are applicable to us. The roadway safety audits, that's a unique safety review procedure. Roadway safety audits are multidisciplinary and include a large team of stakeholders like law enforcement, multiple transportation agencies, not just the owner agency, governing board members, business owners, landowners, school districts. And so we've done a couple of those where we look at really specific areas where we know we have safety issues and we try to think outside the box by involving these, these multidisciplinary groups. Rumble strips and rumble stripes, you're all familiar with those, and we started implementing those. The safety edge, the safety edge is on the edge of the pavement. Instead of having a drop-off, you have a 30-degree angle of pavement. So it's easier to, if you go off the road, it's easier to get back on the road. Roundabouts, we currently don't use roundabouts, but it's a very proven safety countermeasure that, that we have considered in the past and will continue, continue to consider in the future. It's a really well-known fact that roundabouts renew, reduce the, the possibility or the number of fatalities in an intersection by 90%. So while you may have more or less serious crashes, you, or while you have, may have more serious or more non-serious crashes, your serious crashes and your fatalities are reduced by 90%. Left and right turn lanes at stop-controlled intersections. We've got three or four of those throughout the county where we've added turn lanes to try to reduce the, the number of conflicts that we'll, we'll see at an intersection. And then walkways is how it's described, but what that means in a larger definition is we have installed wider shoulders on identified routes for pedestrians and bikes, bicycles. We've also worked with the city of Hartford when we did a reconstruction project near there to install a bike lane or a bike path. Those are all of the countermeasures that were released in 2008. These are the countermeasures that were released in 2010 or 2012. Some of these are, are repeated, so I'll just kind of skip over those ones. The safety edge again. Corridor access management. Access management refers to the design, application, and control of entry and exit points along the, the roadway. Thoughtful access management can enhance safety and reduce trip delay and congestion. Minnehaha County uses a standard protocol for controlling access through a permit system and by looking closely at existing access points during reconstruction projects. And so that's something that we've been fairly successful on. And just trying to eliminate the situation where we have a, like a one road, or one mile roadway section that has 15 access points. And that can cause serious concern for safety when we have those types of situations. We do have a couple of those out there that have essentially been grandfathered into our system. But we try to prevent future situations like that from happening. Longitudinal rumble strips and rumble stripes on two-lane roads again. And then enhanced delineation and friction for horizontal curves. So in the past...
Go ahead.
In, in the past, we had curves out there with very minimal signage. As you're approaching a curve, you'd have an arrow sign that shows that there's a curve. But if you miss that or weren't paying attention, you'd literally drive straight through the curve and, and go off the roadway. So now we have a whole bunch of chevrons that have been installed on every single curve that we have on our system. We've got the rumble strips and the rumble stripes on the curves. And so the curves that we do have are a lot safer. We've also been trying to remove as many curves as, as we can and create T-intersections that are, are, they do function safer than the curves. The countermeasures that were released in 2017, they include the systematic or systemic application of multiple low-cost countermeasures at stop-controlled intersections. And what that means is, is you're familiar with our dual-stop and dual-stop-ahead sign program that we started this last year. At every one of our highway, highway intersections, we install a, a lot of different signs. And that's the, the systemic application that we're talking about here. The roadside design improvements at curves again. Local road safety plans. And so this is something that the federal government and the state government have pushed quite a bit. Each agency should try to develop a local road safety plan, just a plan of how you're going to approach safety, what kind of initiatives you're going to have. And so we did that a long time ago and we update ours on somewhat regular basis. US Limits 2, that's an, an online software or tool that we use to do our engineering speed studies. We put a whole bunch of different data points into this program and that helps conduct the, the speed limit study so we can help determine what the best speed limit for a road section should be. And then we, it's an objective tool that we're able to report to the public or, or ourselves. Whoever came, came about the concern for the speed limit issue to begin with. So looking at some of the results, I was hoping to have some more data on here, but wasn't able to get it prepared in time. But this is a graph that we maintain in the department. This is the historical crash statistics for our road, roadways since 2004. The blue line are the number of fatalities on our road sections and the red line are the serious crashes. And you can see we've been somewhat consistent on fatalities. Our, our fatality rating has actually reduced over time. If you imagine the number of travel, number of vehicles traveling on our roads, in 2004, were a lot less than what they are in 2019 and 20. And so we've been able to maintain and a little bit decrease in number of fatalities, even with the significant increase in traffic. And then the serious crashes, they've been kind of all over the board. We've seen a pretty significant reduction here recently. And we're not sure if that's because we're doing something really awesome or if it's just, just happening that way. And so we'll need a few more years of data to really understand that better. For fatalities, the factor that we look at, it's measured in the number of deaths per 100 million vehicle miles traveled. And nationwide average in 2018 was 1.13 fatalities per 100 million vehicle miles traveled. We're less than 1.0, we're like 0.98, I think. And so we'd like to be less than that, we'd like to be zero, that's what we're really shooting for. And then, like, we're, we're really not going to stop pushing these safety initiatives until we've reached that. And when we reach that, we're still going to work hard to maintain that. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Karski.
No questions, but comments. And I'm sure it's purely coincidental, DJ, that the years I was your liaison, that the number of fatalities and accidents went down so drastically, but happy coincidence. And the other thing is, after three years as your liaison, I learned a lot of terms like longitudinal rumble strips and enhanced delineation and friction for horizontal and vertical curves. So hills and turns is what we're talking about, but it's always interesting working with you. Thank you for what you do and your, your team, got good people. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Commissioner Barth.
So DJ, do you keep track of the, the accidents that happen due to, you know, not having the proper equipment on the automobile, being intoxicated as a driver, you know, running a stop sign, this kind of thing? Because clearly your measures will make things safer, but it makes them idiot-proof and we invent a better idiot.
We, we do track that, Jeff. We don't, we don't gather that data and, and make reports ourselves, but we use data that's supplied by the Department of Public Safety. And so the crash tree diagram that was shown on one of those slides, that, that was a lot busier than what our crash tree diagram looks like and that's why I showed that one. That's actually statewide, but we have a very similar tool that is just for Minnehaha County Highway Department. And so we look at all the different data just from our department. And when I talked, the slide that showed just the data, I talked about sometimes you don't have enough data and so you'll use data from other sources. And so we reference the, the South Dakota data pretty frequently. We also look at our very own data. Every time there's a fatal crash in Minnehaha County, on our, on our roads at least, I visit that site. Hopefully the, the day of, if not the day after, and look at what we can do better. If we had something that was potentially a cause for the crash or something that we weren't doing correctly, we look to correct that within, within the next couple of days. So we're very aware of the crash statistics on our highway system and, and review them on a regular basis.
Thank you, and thank you too, Dean Karski. Good job.
Other questions? I just thank you for being here, thanks to your entire team. You know, I know that you talk about focus on safety, but we as a commission don't always get to see this kind of data to know. You know, I, I think we all kind of take for granted when we get to drive on roads that they're passable and, you know, that we can get to where we want to go and we can get our business done. You know, right now during harvest season, that the, so many people in our county depend on the roads to bring their harvest in. But, you know, there is a whole lot of work that goes into making those roads as safe as possible. And I just really wanted people in the county to take a little time to think about how much we have done to try to keep them safe. And to Commissioner Barth's point, you know, and to the public conversation we've had so much about personal responsibility and doing what we can to care for others, is that we, you know, we in the county are taking safety as a high priority and, and we need the folks who are driving and exercising the privilege to drive to exercise their personal responsibility. Don't drive distracted, don't drive impaired, pay attention to all these signs that have been put up. And so that you keep yourself and your family safe and keep others safe. I know we've had some unfortunate, very serious fatal accidents here in Minnehaha County recently. And so nobody wants that. And so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Commissioner Heiburger.
I could think of one comment, as it snowed this morning, is that the Highway Department has made a lot of changes to snow removal and how things are handled in the winter. And I think there've been some positive improvements. And in my 10 years, I've seen improvements in how the rural roads look. And so just kudos for that as we're moving into snow removal time and there will be probably plenty of comments from all around. But I think overall, you guys have done a great job on that one too.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we had to put our first Facebook post out today of a snowplow with snow in front of it. So not very excited about that, but hopefully it's going to clear up a little bit here after this week.
We are thankful to see the moisture though, so it is helpful as we reevaluate our burn ban, whether we've had enough moisture for that, so. All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks for being here this morning. All right, that takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to authorize a change order to add camera equipment to the jail expansion. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to approve a change order for Accurate Controls at a cost of $85,526.92. A little bit of background on this, this change order would either add or replace a total of 37 cameras within the jail kitchen and the court hallway within the jail expansion. A little bit of background on this contract, you signed a contract August 20th, 2019 with Accurate Controls. That contract was one for 1.167 million. We do have a contingency of $118,000, so we have contingency to cover this. I think by the time we get done, we're going to be pretty close to have used a fair amount of that particular money. And Chief Deputy Gromer, we're on track Thanksgiving to be done with this project, which is great because we initially had some thoughts it was going to go into 2021, but they've been working really well to get this done. So the request is to authorize the change order.
Questions?
Motion to approve the change order?
Aye.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Nobody wants to grill the chief deputy about anything? All right, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Glad you got your steps in and walked over here, so. All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Well, I would note that, you know, COVID has clearly not gone away. We are appreciative of the county employees that are wearing their masks. I noticed that all the, all of the commissioners had their masks on when they came this morning. You know, we, it's going to take us all to do everything we can. And if one of those things is wearing a mask, then I would just really ask that people exercise a professional or the personal responsibility to care for themselves, keep our schools open, let the other athletic teams finish their championships like the soccer team was able to. And one of the, one of the ways, one of the tools that we have is to wear masks and to do the other things. You know, wash your hands until your skin flakes off like mine is. And stay home if you're sick. And, you know, observe that spacing, that six feet of kind of awkwardness of spacing sometimes. We have noticed that folks kind of have, kind of forgotten about that a little bit in some of our lines in our building. And so we're going to probably look at putting some markers back out to kind of like the highway to remind us when there's a curve coming, to remind us that we need to stay that, that social distanced apart. Because our numbers are not looking good and our hospitalization rate is not looking good. And so we need to do everything we can to make sure that our healthcare workers can take care of those that really need that care. We are having another task force, COVID task force meeting tomorrow morning to discuss about other options that we, we might want to look at. And we may want to make sure that department heads, for example, recognize the flexibility they have to have some of their team work at home. I know a lot of businesses are going back to kind of AB scheduling to make sure that they don't have all their team. to make sure that they don't have all their team go down at one time so they can continue their business, continue in, just like other businesses, we want to make sure we can provide needed services to the citizens of Minnehaha County. The other item I would just want to mention for liaison reports is that the administrative renovation, the first meeting on that group for the extension admin building with our architect is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, so we're looking forward to getting that process kicked off and getting the team assembled so that the architects can start meeting with the various user groups to make sure that we can address all the concerns and needs that folks have there.
All right, anything else? If not, next item is new business. Any new business? Hearing none. Any old business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
That's Jeff here. Say, I was surprised to hear that Commissioner Hyburger has been here for 10 years, because it seems like forever, just that I mentioned that.
Thank you very much. She's very appreciative, thank you. I hesitate to ask if there's any other old business. Commissioner Bennega.
The weekend news media, and I'm just clarifying, just to be sure everybody got the right information, showed a property transfer for the county of $4,424,000 some odd dollars in the property transfers, and they were off by a few decimals points because it was only $4,424. So the county did not buy or sell $4.2 million for the property.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. That did raise a couple eyebrows, I know. All right, anything else? Old business? If not, it entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes. We will reconvene in about 10 minutes. Thank you, everyone.